Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 6th meeting of Dublin City Council. Let's see, our agenda's way different than it normally is for all kinds of different reasons, so I'm going to follow along here and make sure that we get it right. And we start off with my friend John Reiner leading us in. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we have a couple of exciting things to check off the agenda first, including the oath of office for our newly elected, recently elected members. Two of them are returning to their posts, and Andy Keeler is joining us at his post, so welcome, Andy. We're going to start with Christina. If you could have your friends, family, and whoever's going to be doing the swearing in come forward, it's all yours.
Thanks. This is my friend Lauren Hunter. She'll be swearing me in. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Happy to be here. I, Christina Aludo.
I, Christina Aludo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of a council member of the city of Dublin.
The duties of a council member of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinance and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinance and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Christina. Next up, Chrissy Amros Grooms. Chris?
With great pleasure, I ask you to repeat after me. I, Chris Amros Grooms.
I, Chris Amros Grooms.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of a council member.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of a council member.
Of the city of Dublin.
Of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charters of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chris. And finally, Andy Keeler. Andy, it's all yours.
I'd like to introduce my good friend, colleague, and practically my second father, Bill Root. He and I have worked together for 25 years. He's like my second dad.
Okay, Andrew, repeat after me. I, Andrew Keeler, do solemnly swear.
I, Andrew Keeler, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties as council member of the city of Dublin.
The duties as council member of the city of Dublin.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the city of Dublin.
Ohio.
Ohio.
So help me God.
When do I get to kiss the bride?
Now. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No turning back now, Andy. The heat just got turned up in the room. Ann, could you please call a roll?
Ms. Amros Grooms.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yeah.
Mr. Rosa.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
And Mr. Peterson.
Here. I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for a discussion of personnel matters related to the appointment of public officials. Is there a second?
A second.
Ann?
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
And Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Now, for the people in the room, this is kind of an extended stepping back to the back room. We have to go through a number of different leadership decisions and organizational decisions and things of that nature. We will do that with all dispatch and come back as quickly as we can, and then we will proceed into the regular agenda of the regular meeting. So, we are adjourned temporarily.
Oh, maybe. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Yeah. Maybe, maybe you already gave me this, I forget. Okay. I think I know. I think I know.
Yeah. I think I know. I think I know.
I know, I signed it and everything. I straight up left it and swiped it. No, I, uh... Oh, there is actually, sorry, there's seventeen on the money. At any rate, it's about four hundred thousand dollars. Create a cheap project off of some hard money. But then, the council, because the contract was spent to public works and different divisions, I can't just, I can't model it, but you guys, the contract is up, but I can't model it. So, I fixed it for now as well, but I had to pay that money. It's a soft cost, I have to reduce that, use it, pay for that, and I'm gonna fix it later. So, when you see that you have this money, that's fine. And I was gonna write you an email, I messaged you, I'll just put in notices, I'll tell them. Okay, that's what I think. Like, at some point, he's gonna need the money, I'll know what I can do, etc. Side note, he can talk about the four thousand dollars he spent on this budget. So that makes it unimperative, therefore, so it's a mutual budget change. It's a launch. It's actually what I would do, because we're the same division, which is, like, yeah, do that, which is, perhaps, a long story, not a big impact, but it must be. Eventually, the board is gonna come looking for it, shop it, it's a problem there. Yeah. Yeah, the last thing, you just gotta... No one needed that. Everybody's on vacation, so I was forever... I was. For a time, I was ever asleep. So... Yeah. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the last thing, you just gotta... No one needed that. Everybody's on vacation, so I was forever... I was. For a time, I was ever asleep. So... Yeah. Um... Yeah. Yes. 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 And raise your right hand. I, Kathy DeRosa... Do solemnly swear... That I will faithfully execute... The duties of Vice Mayor... Of the City of Dublin, Ohio... And will... To the best of my ability... Preserve, protect, and defend... The Constitution of the United States... And of the State of Ohio... And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin, Ohio... So help me God. Congratulations. There we go. Okay. All right, so now, we're gonna take a picture here, in the middle of chambers, is that right? You doing it right here? Yeah. Congratulations, congratulations. Yes. Okay. All right, so now, we're gonna take a picture here, in the middle of chambers, is that right? You doing it right here? Yeah. Congratulations, congratulations. Yes. Okay. All right, sit right on the edge of your seats, nice and tall, this is perfect, good. Perfect, good, you're ready, button, button, perfect, good. All right, all right. And, press, we'll step forward, chair, this is... Yeah, yeah. Okay, you guys are careful, now, get here, real quick. Good. And last one, everybody stop smiling. I'm gonna say one, two, three, give me that smile. And one, two, three, give me that smile. Thanks, guys. Some headshots. Yep. The best time, I mean, everybody's good there. How many, how many people really have double headshots? Just, just you, oh, let's do it. Okay. I have a driver's license. Let's do it, um... Yeah. 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 Like getting my headshot. Yeah. Good. Last one, first. And, one, two, three, house. Yeah. 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 This is terrible. Yeah. 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 We're moving seats. Not yours, Chris. He's still... Oh, no, he's on. Well, here goes nothing, huh? anyone present here this evening that has something that they would like to address with city council prior to us pursuing the agenda for this evening, please come forward, raise your hand, come forward, we'll ask that you enter your name and address into the record. This is for items not on this evening's agenda. Very good, sir, please come forward, state your name and address into the record.
Hi, my name is Richard Lamparos, and my address is 6610 Barron's Court Loop, Dublin, Ohio. I just wanted to address the council briefly on the AEP transmission line project, currently scheduled to go down, possibly down Shire Rings Road. As part of, as a new resident to Ballantre, I've been recently researching the history of this project, going back to 2017, when AEP first addressed the council about the proposed route. What we found is, the route was very different back in 2017, going well north of Shire Rings Road, very far north of where the proposed route is now. I do have a copy of that original route, if anyone would like that. But, I also found through the minutes of the Dublin City Council meeting back at that time, that there was a lot of discussion about trying to keep this away from the Ballantre neighborhood, from several, both the city manager and several council members at the time. So, I don't know if we're gonna be on the next full meeting, but I would just like to propose that we do have some time to talk about this at the next meeting, and also discuss why this changed between July of 2017, when that first open house happened, and when this was first brought to city council, and September of 2019, when the route seemed to change at that time. Thank you.
Very good, thank you for your thoughts. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda, it consists of the October 14th, November 18th, and December 2nd work session and regular meeting minutes. Is there anyone that would like to pull those from the consent agenda? Hearing none, and please call the roll.
I'm Ms. Fox. Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
I'm Mayor Amaro's Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll start now with second readings for public hearing ordinances, ordinance 7319.
Adopting Chapter 122, under the title 11 of the City of Dublin Codified Ordinances to Regulate Short-Term Rental Facilities.
Very good. We have a report from legal counsel, Jennifer Adler, please.
Yep. Good evening, council members. We do have a short presentation that Thad Boggs from my office is going to run, to answer some of the questions from the first reading.
Very good, thank you, Thad.
Thank you, Mayor Amaro's Grooms, members of council. This item of legislation is here for second reading tonight, we initially discussed it before the full council at your December meeting. This has developed over a period of time, due to the dramatic growth of the short-term rental industry in general, and over the last several months, as council and staff have fielded specific complaints from residents of the city, has caused the Community Development Committee and council to further pursue legis-
Bed and breakfast establishments lawfully operating as of the effective date to continue in operation, provided that they do not cease for more than ninety days. So it would be grandfathering them in, to use a colloquial term. As to corporate housing, if that is an industry, an activity that this has swept in inadvertently, there is a potential amendment that would exempt them from the definition of short-term rental by requiring those who claim to be corporate housing to be an entity so distinct from a natural person, and that they would have to attest by affidavit that their primary activity is providing accommodations to corporate clients. So that if somebody were to make a false statement in that regard, the onus would be on them because an affidavit being a sworn legal document could make somebody subject, for instance, to falsification charges. There would be penalties associated through other parts of the code to misconstruing one's business there. So I covered a lot of ground, hopefully quickly. Happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Thank you, Ted. We have several that have signed in. You want us to take public comment, and then we'll go forward with questions from there, if that's okay with everyone. As I call your name, please come forward and stand at the podium here, and we will need you to enter your name and address into the record, and we will gladly hear your thoughts on this. The first person that signed in is Frank Fraz. Very good. Please come forward.
Good evening. Frank Fraz, 7735 Kate Brown Drive, Dublin. I am president of the Brandon Homeowners Association, and I've been before you before when it was in the Community Development Committee. We are aware of at least one short-term rental that we have in our neighborhood. And while we have not had any serious issues to date, we want to make sure we don't have any serious issues in the future. We have had some complaints from neighbors regarding noise and parking issues. Our biggest concern, though, is safety. There have been reports documented by some newspaper articles that from May to October there were forty-two incidents of shootings and people being killed because of parties and this, and we want to make sure that never happens in Dublin. Ideally, we would like a ban like Upper Arlington has, but we understand the position the city is in. And the way the ordinance is written with the registration that's required, the fourteen-day cap, the bed tax being paid, we are okay with that, and we just want to thank City Council for addressing this issue now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray Lee.
My name is Ray Lee, L-E-E, and I live at 7728 Windward Drive in Dublin, same neighborhood as the previous speaker. I'm here to speak against the ordinance. I would say, first of all, I'd like to specifically address the concern raised by the previous speaker because I was able to observe Ms. Reeler give an interview to Channel Six, and this seems to be a common justification for an ordinance like this is safety concerns, because everybody's concerned with safety, and I'm certainly concerned with safety. But invite your attention to the memo from August thirteenth provided to, at that time, I believe it was Community Development Center that had just gotten this. It said, "Safety concerns have been raised," and I'm quoting here, "Safety concerns have been raised regarding short-term rentals in general. The Dublin Police can only locate one complaint that was related to potential Airbnb, and that complaint was noise-related. That was not confirmed." So it's an unconfirmed complaint. "That was not confirmed as the music was turned down prior to the officer's arrival." It addresses the matter of the shootings raised, because that was in the media, and certainly that happened, but specifically said, "Recently shootings occurred at two separate locations in Columbus that were allegedly Airbnb. Dublin Police spoke to Columbus, and the incidents in Columbus seem to be related to geographic crime trends, activities that are not and not the nature of the rental. Based on police's limited interaction and or calls for service at short-term rentals within the city, it does not appear necessary to adopt regulations at this time." Now, I understand the issue of concerns are extant, but legitimate government is to look into concerns. And if you look into the concerns, and they're real concerns, then you take action. Now, hopefully, the action you take is going to cause less problems than the underlying concern that gave rise to the investigation in the first place. And while there may be concerns, the city staff has looked into this, and they've written and the Community Development Committee, as well as the City Council, a number of memorandums that I've been able to find. This one unconfirmed noise complaint is the only actual incident involving an Airbnb in the entire record that I've been able to find. Now, there may be administrative record that I haven't found yet, because I only learned of this recently, did as much research as I could for tonight. And again, one unconfirmed noise complaint. Now, you get noise complaints from long-term rental, you get noise complaints from residents occupied. So, one noise complaint does not justify restricting property rights. And that's, I'm a libertarian, property rights are kind of a big deal to me, in the nature of what's the function of government? And respectfully, I would submit that this particular matter is a solution in search of a problem. The city staff has been monitoring short-term rentals. This is also addressed in most of the memorandums authored by the Law Department, the interim director of code enforcement supervisor, and the interim, I miswrote it, an interim director of something else, it's on the memorandum. But as they've been monitoring it for now, at least six months, they've never found more than twelve rentals available, no more than twelve at any given time throughout this period. And look at the size and the number of residences in the city of Dublin. Twelve is not very many. This is not, worst-case scenario, it's not really a problem to have twelve. There's three legitimate government interests that have been addressed by the Law Department and others, and frankly, I think they did a great job in that. It's land use, property values, health and safety, and taxes. And I'd invite your attention, again, to the memorandum. It specifically said that there's not enough short-term rentals to impact land use at all, and that bad behavior by guests can be already addressed specifically, as for poor behavior by guests of short-term rentals, issues such as noise or property damage can be addressed through existing codes and are not unique to the presence of short-term rentals. So everything, you know, the concept of bad behavior in traffic and parking, oh, this is my time, I apologize, I'll move quickly, that's not unique to short-term rental. Taxes, they also say that taxes is covered, that safety is covered in the memorandum. So I'm running out of time, so I'm going to try to conclude very quickly with, I have three requests for the council. One would be to delay a vote on this. People like me, that I am an Airbnb host, what happened is, I just learned of this this week. There was, a city employee contacted through Airbnb. There was a way to do that, but we didn't learn of it until just this week, not really had enough time to prepare. I would like to have more. There's no urgency to enact this tonight as opposed to the next meeting. The second thing, obviously, I'm opposed to it. Again, submit it's a solution in search of a problem. The solution has costs, because you're going to have code enforcement costs, and you're also going to have the non-economic cost of a deprivation of property rights of residences. And I submit that depriving people of their property rights has a cost in the body politic that is not worth what we get out of this ordinance. And the third thing is, related to the first proposed amendment, if you do take this action, which I obviously oppose, at least grandfather people that have already arranged their economic affairs in light of the existing law. And that's my circumstance. I'm not sure how we're going to be able to keep our house in Dublin if we can't use it just because of ours is somewhat of a unique situation with my, but anyhow, there'll be significant economic impact on people that have arranged their economic affairs consistent with the law as it is. We would ask you to grandfather those of us who have been doing this and have planned our economic resources around it. Thank you very much, your attention.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Lee. Next, we have Mac Lawless.
My name is Mac Lawless. My address is 4338 Tuller Road, Dublin, Ohio. That's my business address. I'm the president of Corporate Housing Systems, and as Thad mentioned, it looks like, hopefully, maybe there'll be an amendment to kind of exempt our industry from this regulation. So I just wanted to give a quick background about our industry in general and my company. So we've been in business since 1984 in Dublin. We're a provider of fully furnished apartments. So as Thad mentioned, we lease apartments long-term, we furnish them, we do utilities, provide housekeeping service, things like that. And we provide those services for companies like Honda, Cardinal Health, Nationwide, Wendy's, Aldi, I mean, a lot of big Dublin businesses that use us as a transition for people that are relocating to town primarily. This is, a majority of our business is probably ninety percent, I'd say, are stays of thirty days or more, they're relocation-driven, and they're corporate. We do do some shorter-term stays. Sometimes we don't know how long a stay is going to be. Somebody moves in, they may buy a house a lot faster than they thought, and then they're only staying for fourteen nights or twenty nights or something like that. So, again, it's not a majority of our business, but it is probably ten percent of our revenue is driven by shorter-term stays. The average length of stay for our guests is sixty-eight days, so again, a majority of it is much longer. We don't own any apartments, and we are not a permanent occupant, obviously, of any of our apartments. So as the legislation or the board of directors is written right now, I don't even know how it really applies to us, because there's a lot of talk that really pertains more to single-family homes. You know, you're an owner, you're a primary resident, and we don't really fit into either of those categories. So, I was going to say, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Oh, also, we are not listed. We don't currently list on any of the, you know, Airbnbs and VRBOs, the home-sharing sites that people tend to think of. Our sales and revenue primarily are driven by working with businesses and talking to them. So my concern is that industry-wide, throughout our industry, I'm a member of a national organization of corporate housing providers, so I've seen legislation that's passed in a lot of cities in LA, San Francisco, New York, and followed it closely. And this, to me, seems to be some of the more restrictive language I've seen even on large, compared to large cities that really do have a problem with the housing shortage and things like that. So I guess I would urge council to look into how this may unintentionally impact businesses in Dublin like us and impact our clients. We're providing a valuable service to them, and it's something that's needed, and it's not, I don't think that this regulation is really designed to mess with people like us and mess with businesses like us that are providing a good solution. We're not having party houses and bachelor parties and that sort of thing. So my concern is just that there's unintended consequences with the regulation as it's written. And I'm happy to answer any questions about, if you guys have any questions at all about our industry and what we do and how we do it, I'm happy to talk to you anytime or answer questions.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Lawless. We'll certainly consider this.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Mr. Lawless, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Your housing, is it all in commercial areas?
It's all, all of the apartments that we lease are from large apartment communities. So, you know.
They're in multi-families?
Exactly. All multi-family stuff, nothing in single-family. Again, we don't own any of it. A majority of the complexes we work with, I would say, are usually one hundred fifty to two hundred units and higher. So think of Bridge Park or Tuller Flats in Dublin. Scioto Ridge is in Dublin, Scioto Crossing is in Dublin, those types of communities, larger, multi-family, not necessarily single-family or residential.
And some of your clients aren't necessarily corporate. They might be people that would be moving or have a reason to stay here for family that just need a short period of time.
We get some of that, not as much as we used to, really, because I think a lot of those people now are going to Airbnb and VRBO and those places. But we do still have people that maybe are in-between homes. They sell a home quickly, and they haven't built their new home yet, and they need a place for a month or two months, or sometimes even shorter.
Okay.
But yeah, a majority of it is driven by corporate business, not so much by individuals.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, is it Mary Lee Yoder?
I'm Marlene Yoder, 5747 Sterns Road, 43016. I only found out tonight on six o'clock news about this meeting tonight, so I decided to come. My first time to a city council meeting, so I'm a little nervous. But anyways, I'm an Airbnb hostess. I have been for two years. I love it. It has been a godsend for me. I live kind of out in the country, so there's no problem with noise where I live. Anyway, so, and I understand the concerns that some have expressed about the noise or about parking or whatever, there can be problems, but I think to just come up with this ordinance and say, "No Airbnb in Dublin for fourteen days." What's the magic number of fourteen days? I don't know. Why even fourteen days when I just completely outlaw it? I think that's really, really, really restrictive. And I have other friends who are doing Airbnb, not in Dublin, but we all just love doing it. We love having people come to our homes. I've had people from Saudi Arabia all over. So I know that's not the issue, but I would just beg to have some more leniency, maybe even two months that we could do it out of the year. I don't really know exactly how to present it. Like I said, I just found out about it tonight. I don't have any research, I don't have anything to prove facts or anything, but just to say, please reconsider it for those of us that do love doing Airbnb. So, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts, Ms. Yoder. Next, we have Warren Fishman.
I'm Warren Fishman, 8577 Turnberry Court, Dublin, Ohio. I really didn't have much to say until I heard the opposition. And I live on a court of six houses, and there are two Airbnbs on that court, on my court now, and one, another one four houses down, right off of my court. And we live in a residential neighborhood. I have no problem with Airbnbs in commercial neighborhoods. The problem we've had is, and the problem in our court hasn't necessarily been noise, but what it is, is a lot of people, a lot of Uber's coming at one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning. In fact, one of my neighbors has moved out of his house. It's a full-time Airbnb. And he, we had a group there that was during the political season doing a campaign for a referendum, and there must have been twenty cars a night coming in and out of my court, bringing ballots and people, and people standing in front of my house and my neighbor's house waiting for an Uber. Parking, they parked six, in fact, on my neighbor's ad, it says, "Make sure you put your cars in the garage," but they couldn't. They had two in the garage and two, and then some on the street. One guy parked on my lawn, and I said, "You can't park on my lawn, they'll probably tow you away." He left, and he came back in an Uber, you know? So he parked somewhere, you know? So also, I've spent many years in Dublin fighting for good zoning and lovely neighborhoods, which we have. And I think that there's nothing wrong with a commercial use in a commercial neighborhood, but an Airbnb is a commercial use. Our houses are sixteen feet apart, okay? And my neighbor's wife told my wife that her daughter, her young daughter came in the house and said, "Mommy, there's some guy sleeping in our hammock," okay? And it was from the guy, the Airbnb. So you don't know who the people are, and we assume they're all nice people. My neighbors are nice people, the people renting the house are nice people, but our problem is using it for a commercial neighborhood. And I sympathize with people who make their livelihood, and I would suggest they buy a house in a commercial neighborhood and use it for a commercial use. That's about it. But one thing, a question I had, I noticed it said five-room. One of my neighbors has a five-bedroom house. That would not count what it, that is.
So that is, that is one of the cutoffs for something that's considered a hotel under the fire code?
It has nothing to do with a residential house, then?
Right.
Okay. Yes. And by the way, my other neighbor has four bedrooms, and I understand he's putting a fifth bedroom in the basement now, so he can have five bedrooms also, but we've had as many as, I don't know where they stay, but at each house, twelve to fifteen people you see coming in and out. The other thing is that people who rent these, like during every Ohio State football game that I know of, the home game, those houses have been filled with lots and lots of people. And my neighbor behind me called me on the street behind us and said that there were bunches of people drinking beer, walking up and down the bike path behind her house, and she didn't know who they were, and she was kind of afraid for her kids. So I think it's a great commercial use. I don't think it belongs in a residential neighborhood where houses are fifteen or sixteen feet apart. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman, for your thoughts. Next, we have Peter O'Neill.
Good evening. Peter O'Neill, 8568 Turnberry Court, here in Dublin. I'm in the same cul-de-sac as the previous speaker with the two Airbnb rentals. So the main points I'd like to make, one, I'd like to thank the council. I do think this is an important matter. I appreciate you protecting my property rights to enjoy my home, to hopefully not continue to lower the value of my home with what now are hotels next to me. So, thank you. I do appreciate that. Thank you for putting this together. I guess the main thing I would add is that, you know, everyone talks like, you know, these are nice families coming in and out, but we don't see that. We do see commercial activity. We do see people who, instead of renting office space and hotel rooms, absolutely, they're coming in and they're using these nice big Dublin houses as both their offices and then using the bedrooms and, you know, it's in, you know, commercial vehicles coming in and out of our cul-de-sacs. So I don't call the police when all the cars are there. I don't, it was my daughter who, she came in, "Dad, there's a man in my hammock." I didn't call the police. You know, these are not all on record, okay? But when you live next to it, it greatly disrupts your life, and, you know, for those twelve people that have to deal with this, that their life has been greatly disrupted, you know, I really appreciate you taking this and not just saying, "Well, it's only twelve people. Let's not bother." So I just wanted to say thank you. I think it's very important. And, you know, for the, one thing I didn't understand in the legislation, if you're living there and only airbeing one room while you're still there, I mean, I actually have no problem with that. If my neighbors were doing that, I actually wouldn't be that concerned. If they were home and just airbeing one room, that'd kind of be okay. You know, they're doing their entire houses. So I wasn't real clear on where the legislation stood with just a room. Is that?
So the legislation does not distinguish between hosted and unhosted rentals. So somebody being physically present that is the owner or occupant versus not being present does not change the registration or cap requirement. Where the owner and resident component comes into play is for registration. You're only eligible to register if you're either the owner or primary resident.
Thank you. And once again, I really want to thank you to the council for taking up this matter, and it greatly impacts my life, and so, thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Neal, for your thoughts. Okay, I'll open it up to discussion. Thoughts? Oh, I'm sorry, we have an additional person. Please, come forward. I apologize. Nope, that's just fine. Come on up and give us your name and address.
I'm David Vandiver. I live at 5674 Hathaway Court. When I first heard about Airbnb, my son and my wife were talking about it, and they said, "Hey, we're empty nesters now. Hey, Dad, why don't you and Mom do that?" And I said, "Are you nuts?" And that was my first reaction. I'd have to put security cameras all over the place and change all the locks and do all this stuff to get ready. We took him, drove him to California for an internship, and stayed at Airbnbs the whole way there. And every single one was a middle-class household, just like ours, and I talked to every single owner and said, "What's your experience been like? Have you ever had a bad experience?" And all of them had had nothing but good experiences. And when we came back, we decided to sign up and open our house up to an Airbnb, and our story's the same. We've had nothing but good experiences. The people that we've hosted have been all professional level. We probably would borderline, I wouldn't say we're an Airbnb, we don't sell gifts. We do provide breakfast if they want breakfast. I mean, it might be a Danish, some people don't want breakfast, but we've made eggs before. We, one woman that goes to Scott's all the time likes her fruit parfaits. We make fruit parfaits, have that ready for her for breakfast. So for me personally, it has been surprising source of joy. I've met, I've had some fascinating conversations, discussions I never would have had any other place. One guy was retired from the CIA. He gave me a history lesson. And so what I'm saying is, I think, well, one of the things I love about Dublin is Dublin's deliberate, we do things right, we care about our people, that's why I like it here. And we also don't have knee-jerk reactions. And I think, as we approach this, I wouldn't want to have riffraff next door either. And so that, we do need to look at that and figure out how to address that, but I think we also need to see the good side of Airbnbs. There's a good element to it, and Dublin embraces change, and I don't want to see us have a, like a short-sighted decision here. I don't think we have enough information. I think the fourteen days is way too restrictive. As I saw in the wordings, you know, there were two occasions where there were eight of them, one with twelve. There's not that many in terms of the private residences. And so I'd like to see, I'd like to just have us really look at the whole picture and say, "Okay, what are we really after?" Go back to the drawing boards, and what are we really trying to accomplish? And I just feel like the way this is structured at this point is not correct. It's not a comprehensive solution. We need to look back at what our objectives are. We want to eliminate riffraff. We want to protect, I'm a property owner. I've been here since ninety-nine. I mean, I want to protect my property, too. My neighbors, one of them's here, and if I'm not speaking the truth, speak up, but never had a complaint from the neighbors. As a matter of fact, a lot of our neighbors will stop us on the street and ask you how it's going, and are really interested in what we're doing. So there's a good side to it, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And then also, well, benefits, I mean, one of the things is people say, you know, "Where do we go for dinner?" A lot of times, we go out to dinner with our guests. So we spend money in Dublin that wouldn't be spent. So there's a positive element from that perspective. And then also, the whole B and B thing, I don't think we qualify, because I don't think we're in one of those districts that are allowed to be a B and B. And so this would really take, it would really sadden me to see a source of joy in my life being taken away. I do understand we need to figure out how to address the issue. None of us want the problems, but I don't think we want to throw the good out either. And so I think we need to take a step back. I looked at those dates, and it's been a topic for two years, but here, we make a motion one month ago, and we're ready to, you know, on But here, we make a motion one month ago, and we're ready to, you know, almost take a vote or whatever the next month. I think we need to step back and say, "Wait, let's take some more time. Let's look at this. Let's figure out what we're really after. Let's protect the people like me that are doing it right. We're not bringing in riffraff. We're bringing in professional-level people. Let's protect the folks that are doing it right. Let's figure out what's wrong when it's not being executed correctly." And then come back and rejoin at a later, at a later date.
Thank you for your thoughts. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that has not yet spoken? Yes, sir? Let me, let me take all the first testimony and then we'll...
Thank you for your time. My name's Andrew Landers. I live at 4909 Lightfield Drive, Dublin, Ohio, Coventry Woods. I work for JP Moore &amp; Chase. I, I wear the lens of risk, and I look at things from a perspective of risks and mitigants to those risks. I guess I would ask the council to think of things in those terms, right? What risks are we introducing to the community? And what, what mitigants could be put into place that would help protect the residents who came into this community with the assumption that those risks and uncertainty that may be introduced through this new economy would be introduced and, and made present by the testimony of our, of the gentleman earlier who spoke about the folks living next door to him in an unoccupied house. My recommendation would be that the council give this some consideration around the dimension of hosted versus unhosted. Because I think that might mitigate the risk, as the prior gentleman just testified and said, "You know what? You're really not going to introduce that much risk if you have a hosted stay." Whereas an unhosted stay could introduce a larger dimension of risk. So that's, from my perspective, I would, I would frame it in that context. And I support the legislation with that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your thoughts. Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else like to speak that has not yet spoken? Okay, you have something else you would like to add into the record? Please come forward.
I, I think that his, his point was well-taken. I think the people who have, though, their, their economic situation is affected by having these Airbnbs, that they should buy a house in a commercial area that, that, that allows them to do that. And, and I think they'd be fine. I think a hosted stay, I do agree, though, is a lot different than a non-hosted stay if you have somebody sharing a bedroom. Our problem has been, we have big houses and we have lots of people that we don't know. And, and, and that's about it. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate that. You know, we're, we're not going to get back and forth. We exceeded our time the first time around. But let us see if we have any questions that might be pertinent for that. So anyone else like to speak that has not yet had the opportunity to speak? No? Okay. We'll close it down for a public comment and open it up for council discussion. Anyone have any?
So Thad, is there any ordinances around that do this hosted versus unhosted distinction? That, that seems to have struck a chord with me.
There are a handful across the country that use a hosted versus unhosted distinction and cap unhosted nights, but not hosted nights. There are also some that don't distinguish, cap all of it, but have a, have set their cap at a different level than 14 days.
For, for me, I guess that, with that question, for me, it sort of comes down to what are people's reasonable expectations? And, and whose expectations got changed on them? And, and Warren's comment is compelling to me, that when he bought his home, they expected these were all single-family homes. That was the expectation. And now this industry has cropped up and it has changed things. So who, who had the deck changed on them? I think people that are living in single-family homes who now have empty homes being rented to large groups of people, that, that changed on them. And I don't know that that's necessarily right. So my inclination is to lean into supporting that kind of a thing. But this idea of hosted and unhosted, I'm interested as to whether that, because that seems to me, you kind of have a babysitter there. You know, it's, it's the difference between owner occupied and not owner occupied. And if the owners are still occupying it, I think you've got somebody on site sort of babysitting the situation. They have a relationship and a responsibility with their neighbors. There's someone there that Warren could call and say, "Look, you got to knock this off." So I don't know. It's, that's, that's sort of a compelling distinction for me, this hosted and unhosted. Might be a reasonable place to end up, but I don't know that we have enough information.
You know, Greg, I agree with you. I think, you know, what we're looking at is, you know, and when you think about all the soccer fields we have and how inexpensive it is to rent somebody's house and bring the soccer team over to the house for one or two nights, or the football team or something, and all these kind of things can get out of hand. But I think it gets down to bed and breakfasts. And a real bed and breakfast is owner occupied, has a person there monitoring that. And that's maybe some legislation we can look into, either expanding over the city. I like the ordinance. I like the two amendments. I think it's a good idea. I agree with you that when you buy into a residential community, you expect it to be a residential community and not a potential hotel site. So I get it. So, but I would also suggest that maybe we could look into expanding the bed and breakfast type of thing, where there's the owner occupier is there with the guest. And that's my take on this. Thank you.
You know, my concern is that we're using a sledgehammer on a problem. I totally understand Mr. Fishman's concern about a neighborhood. I wouldn't want that either. I think that there is a lot more information that we could put together to try to mitigate some of the issues. One of the things that I, that I'm worried about is that the, this new trend of hosting is a commercial industry. So at the bare minimum, it needs to be registered and it needs to be regulated. And to a point where that we could have a place that, when problems are reported, that we can, we can determine what the problem is and revoke a registration if necessary. Because right now, there is nothing to stop the noise, other than a police report. And when you think about the noise and the traffic, we have noise complaints from music at restaurants. We, we aren't able to do anything about it. So I do think that one of the things we might look at is disturbance ordinances aren't, aren't strong enough here to stop any bad behavior in some of the neighborhoods that we have. So, one, I think it needs to be registered. Two, I think we have a concern with safety. Airbnbs don't require that, as I looked at their site, they don't require a fire, fire alarms, smoke detectors, or carbon monoxide. None of that is there. So if you're going to have one, especially if it's unoccupied, it at least should be safe. I also think that the, the whole idea of parking, we don't address that in this. If you're going to rent out any Airbnb, you should be limited on how many parking spaces. You should be limited in occupancy. Not every house can accommodate more than four, six, eight people. I don't think you should just have unlimited occupancy. So I think all of these things are things that we need to think about. And the other thing that, that I worry about is, you know, we, we might be eliminating some really desired co-housing opportunities by having a blanket, short-term rental restriction. Nesting is popular with seniors today. You might want to have a student, you stay for a couple of weeks. Rumors that, that want to come for a visit. Vacation house sharing. There's, there's just a variety of things that I don't think we've thought about. I absolutely don't want to see, I don't want to see problems in the neighborhoods. I, I totally get that. But I, I think that there might be ways to address that and still allow some ability for people to share their homes with others on a short-term basis without being a sledgehammer.
I'm just going to piggyback on what Jane just said. I think registration goes a long way. Let's face it, long-term rentals, I've owned rental properties. I don't have to be registered. I can rent to anyone I want. I'm not on anyone's radar. If it's registered, it's on the city's radar. Three strikes, you're out. So if you have a property owner that is routinely renting to groups that are larger than the house can accommodate, if they're getting complaints from other, other residents, police reports, that kind of thing, three strikes, you're out. And you can't rent it anymore. I think 14 days is a little limiting. I don't know where that came from. But I, I feel like as a property owner, a senior that has rooms that are empty, the kids have moved out, gone to college, gotten married, looking for extra income, looking for socialization, interaction with other folks, I see, it's not really my position to tell you who you can and cannot have sleeping in your house. But we have to regulate it. I, I think $225 is a bit steep. I looked real quickly, there, there are rooms for rent in Dublin for $15 a night. Now, you may say, "That's not the kind of rooms we want to have renting in Dublin." But that fee is exorbitant. When you look at the, the cost, if it's only 14 days, if you're limiting someone to renting a room at $15 a night for 14 days, that fee's like 75%. So, you know, could the fee be related to the size of the house, the number of occupants? Because then it's going to be scaled to the cash flow. So again, I, I kind of echo Jane's comments. I think we need to put a little bit more thought into this. I, I can't see restricting property owners' rights. I think it's really, you, you can't control who moves in next door to you anyway. Clearly, you have a, Warren, you have a problem landowner, property owner, that is renting to the wrong people. And he would face, he or she would face consequences for that. So those are my two cents.
Yeah, please. Thanks. I, I do think that maybe 14 days might be a bit restrictive. I, I get the perspective of, of neighborhoods being neighborhoods. That's why we bought into neighborhoods. I do think there's some additional research that really, that probably ought to be done. I think if we go through this process where we say, "Okay, this house is a four-bedroom house. It can only sleep up to," whatever, "10 people." Now, we've got to have some kind of overhead in terms of administration on administering the registration of all of those, you know, whether it's eight or whether it's 50, there's still an overhead cost to that. And so that's something that does concern me. Then you run into a bit of a slippery slope as well. Because if you have, you know, if you're saying for Airbnbs or whatever, or the like, well, your house can only sleep 10. But then the owner decides they're going to have a family reunion, and they're going to have 15 people that are family members staying there, you know, it, it doesn't seem fair, if you will. And I get that there's a difference. Jane is right about smoke detectors and things. I've used this type of service before, and it's considered an amenity to have smoke detectors and things. So I think that is a little problematic. But, I mean, how far do we want to dictate how people have their own homes and what types of, you know, fire protection or, you know, carbon monoxide? Or, you know, radon mitigation? You know, do we really want to go with this? That feels like a, like we're reaching in too far from a government perspective. You know, I generally am supportive of the legislation. I just think we're not quite there in terms of the language. I am supportive of the amendments in terms of corporate housing, some of the things that we've talked about. I do feel like we need a little bit more work on this to get it to a place where I would be fully supportive of it, though.
Thanks. You know, as I sit and reflect on this, I think one of the challenges, and it's not just Dublin, as we know, cities across the country are grappling with this issue, right? And, and putting legislation and making changes. Is that our zoning laws, our, our commercial, our residential, all of these things, of course, were written because we want to be deliberate, and we want to have a community that's well-planned. And then technology changed. And we've, we've become a sharing economy now. But our rules around how we are going to operate as a community haven't, haven't caught up. I don't even, I don't even know that we've even addressed them, let alone caught up. So I am very, what is the word? Sympathetic, I think, to the idea that, you know, we bought into a residential or we bought into a commercial. And we knew, and we looked into the zoning when we bought it, and we understood what we were getting. Now, I don't think our rules necessarily match the world that we're living in. And I think we have to get it right. Because I, I, I think property rights are both for the homeowner and the person that bought into, to what they bought into. I live on a cul-de-sac. I don't have this on, around me at this point. It could happen tomorrow. How would I feel about that? I would want to know that there are rules and regulations and reasons if we're going to go down that path. So it's not to stop a sharing economy, but we have to catch, we have to think about the rules that we've set for ourselves collectively as a community and get those in line with, with what is before us. So a couple of great suggestions about thinking about hosted and not, thinking about days or not, that I very much appreciate. You put the chart together to help us begin to take the complexity that's before us and start to put it into categories and say, "We want to support a corporate housing. We think that's important. We want to do some of these things. And then we want to protect some other things." So I'm supportive of the legislation. I think it would be helpful to have some more dimensions on that and make sure, before we pass it, that we, that we've exercised some of that a bit. But I think we have to, we have to, if this is our way of catching up what our regulations are as a community that we all built together, we have to do that. This council has to do that, I think. And so I, I would be supportive of the legislation. I think we just need to put a few more dimensions and make sure we, we're comfortable that, that we're, we're catching up with, with, with the world as, as now and in so many ways it's going to continue to do, in ways we haven't even thought about from a sharing perspective. So those are my thoughts.
Jennifer, I have a question for you, a procedural question. If we were to want to take some additional time, if, if we did, would we, would we make a motion to vote it back to committee?
So you could do, you could table this, and we could bring it back to you at, for a work session or information-only packet, or most likely refer it back to Community Development Committee, because that's where we had the last two meetings on it, if you want to...
Thanks. I just need that for clarification.
Well, I certainly appreciate all of the perspectives. It kind of hearkens me back to my high school government class, where the, you know, teacher would tell you that your rights end where your neighbor's nose begins. And it is a very difficult decision to pick where that line is from someone who has lived on a street that had a, a shared rental unit. It was extremely difficult, particularly when my kids were young. Because when you, we live on a cul-de-sac, and when you live on a cul-de-sac, there is a, there's a sense of comfort in knowing your neighbors. There's a sense of, when the bus drops them off at the end of the street, how they'll make their way home and whose homes they'll pass and what people they might encounter. And you can counsel them as to, you know, the, the things that they might pass on their way home. And when that target is moving, that would be increasingly difficult to try to, you know, navigate that path. So I, I do like this legislation. I'm very supportive of this legislation. I don't know that it's perfect. I think that we have seen that there might be some flaws in that, and we certainly do want to be deliberate and constructive. I'm interested in the hosted versus the unhosted residential unit. That opens up, you know, the, another bucket of unintended consequences. Who is its host? You know, is its host happen to be the Grubhub driver that, you know, brings meals? Or is the host a resident who is there, lives there 24/7? Are they the owner? Or could they rent it and then sub, sub-rent, you know, certain rooms of that house? You know, I, I think that, you know, legislation is incredibly difficult to write, because you, you set out to accomplish a task and you end up accomplishing other tasks that you did not intend to do. So we need to take our time, and we need to get it right. I'm sympathetic with the corporate housing. I, I think, you know, apartment units and apartment complexes is certainly not the problem we solve, we set out to solve. So we need to make sure that we don't touch that space. But I'm very supportive of the legislation. I, I do believe that there, in light of new information, there might be a couple of improvements that we could make on it that might make it a better fit for our community. So I, I think I am inclined to refer this back to the Community Development Committee for further discussion to, you know, take this public comment that we heard and we value so tremendously and see what we can do to make this legislation as good as we can possibly get it and have as few unintended consequences as possible. get it and have as few unintended consequences as possible. So, if there is a motion on the floor to that end or to another, I'm happy to entertain it.
I was just going to say, the Community Development Committee is a great committee to talk about it, but I do think it needs, we do need a forum where people can come and give us their thoughts and perspectives on it because in the Community Development Committee, it's not really open to public comment.
We did take public comment.
Or did you allow it?
Yes, we've heard from several of these folks and we did take public comment.
Okay, great.
It isn't typical that we do that, but we did in this situation.
Right. And then, a couple of other things. For me, at this point, I think there's just so many places in this, in this legislation that there's, there's too many holes. There's too many places where we're going to be unintended. I even think about the memorial tournament and I think about the villas at Muirfield. How do we know what short-term rentals, they're being used on a weekly basis? They might be and you may.
Well, those would fall under a different category, I believe. Those are not.
Right. Or people that rent their homes during the memorial tournament, how in the world would you ever monitor how many people come and go in those houses? I mean, there's just so many different ways that this legislation is not adequate. And then, the bed and breakfast also. I think particularly in our mixed-juiced areas in the historic district, there, we might want boutique bed and breakfast hotels and we might want them to be less than five, five units. We might want a small house that has two or three and it's very upscale and we would, we would cut ourselves off at the knees here. So, I think this requires a lot of discussion and certainly, the regulation that would allow a neighbor, as Councilman Keeler said, that would say, "Three strikes and you're out and you just cannot have it any longer." So, then you must be responsible.
It is a difficult thing to call the police on your neighbor.
Yes.
I am sympathetic to that because at the end of the day, you live next to these people and so, I understand Mr. O'Neill's thoughts of, he's not, he didn't call the police when someone was in his daughter's hammock because at the end of the day, he has to live with that neighbor after that. And if the police are called, they're going to know whose hammock they were in and who called the police.
The other thing is you can report it to the Planning Department, as the legislation mentioned, to code enforcement. And I also noticed in one of the legislations, it's a three-strike and for one year, you're out before you can re-register again. So, you're not totally out, but you're at least being reminded. There's a fine and you're reminded if, after three, and you would have to be pretty hard-pressed to have three, I would think, then, then there is a restriction on how you can do it soon enough, so.
And I would just add, you don't want to call the police on your neighbor. That's the deterrent. That's why, you know, the host doesn't want to have their police called and they don't want to lose their license, so they abide by the rules or they're out. I mean, it's a win-win.
So, I would like to make a motion that we table this here and that we send it back to committee for further.
Yes.
Very good. Is there a second? Second? Very good. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
When this comes to the Community Development Committee, we'd like to send a reminder to
Yes.
anyone who testified this evening or anyone who might be interested, we'll send you notice so that you know when that meeting occurs and if you would like to come and participate, you would be welcome to do so. So, that, if you could please collect some email addresses out back, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have a first reading ordinance, 01-20.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Ohio Medical Transportation, Inc., to induce a de-lease or purchase of facility to expand its office and associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Very good. Rachel Ray is our presenter this evening, so please.
Need an introduction?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll introduce it.
Thanks.
Very good. Good evening, members of City Council. Economic Development staff has been in discussions with MedFlight about the relocation and expansion of its dispatch center and operations facility to Dublin. MedFlight is a not-for-profit organization that's based in the city of Columbus and its purpose is to provide care and transport for the critically ill and injured. The company is outgrowing its current dispatch center in the city of Columbus and has been conducting its real estate search in Columbus as well as other communities in the region. This project would result in the relocation of approximately 39 existing MedFlight jobs to Dublin and to be clear, the headquarters will remain in the city of Columbus. This is, again, just for the dispatch center and operations, back-up house operations, with the addition of new employee payroll withholdings associated with approximately 22 new jobs by 2025, for a total of approximately 61 jobs. And in return, the company is expected to execute a minimum seven-year lease or acquire an office facility within the city of Dublin in order for the agreement to take place. The economic development agreement proposed to MedFlight is a five-year, 15% performance incentive on net new payroll withholdings for, again, that five-year period capped at $15,000 for the term of the agreement. And again, the payroll associated with the regional relocating jobs would not contribute towards this incentive agreement. Staff recommends council passage of this ordinance at the second reading public hearing on January 21st and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. I'd just like to take a moment. Is there anyone present this evening from the general public that would like to speak with respect to this ordinance? Hearing none. Open up to council discussion?
No.
No? Very good. Well, we will look forward to hearing you, seeing you at second reading.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. For our next, we'd like to, a motion, to see if there's a motion to waive council rules of order to address resolutions 01-20 and 02-20 and 03-20 together. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Thank you. Anne?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
These are resolutions 0120, approving the city of Dublin's application to adjust the boundaries of the Scioto East Community Entertainment District, generally bounded by Block D within Bridge Park. In Bridge Park Avenue on the north, Shamrock Boulevard on the east, city of Dublin corporate boundary in the south, Riverside Drive, Dave Thomas Boulevard and Block B within Bridge Park on the west. Resolution 0220, approving the city of Dublin's application to adjust the boundaries of the Scioto West Community Entertainment District, generally bounded by Westbridge Street, Rockcrest Parkway, North Street across the Scioto River and Bridge Park Avenue on the north, Dave Thomas Boulevard and Bridge Park Block E property line across State Route 161 on the east. City of Dublin corporate boundary in the south and Corporate Mill Drive on the west. And resolution 0320 is approving the city of Dublin's application to adjust the boundaries of the Scioto North Community Entertainment District, generally bounded by Emerald Parkway, Dublin Arts Council property in the north, Riverside Drive and Dale Teller Drive on the east, Bridge Park Avenue and North Street across the Scioto River on the south and North High Street and the Scioto River Western Edge on the west. Introduction.
I will introduce it.
Thanks.
Okay. We have Jennifer and Deviani both here for presentations.
Yeah, I'm going to start off and then Deviani's going to help me out. In 2016, City Council passed, created three community entertainment districts, or CEDs, the Scioto North, the Scioto East, and the Scioto West CEDs. And a community entertainment district is a tool to help facilitate development and redevelopment of property and it's to create a new pool of liquor licenses to facilitate restaurant and similar venue development. They're usually significantly smaller fee than the typical liquor license, but more restricted. You can only have, use those liquor licenses within the boundaries of the CEDs. As development and redevelopment have occurred in the districts over the past few years, one CED, the Scioto North CED, has become stressed with the number of permits. Each of the three CEDs was originally allocated 15 permits and Scioto North has currently used 12 of those permits. By comparison, Scioto West has only used four of the liquor permits and Scioto East has only used five of the permits. So, to ensure that development continues consistently, staff's recommending the amendment of these internal CED boundaries. So, we're not proposing to add any new property to the CEDs, just adjusting them internally. And Deviani will, has some slides to show us where the boundaries are being proposed to be readjusted.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. So, this is a map that's showing 2016 community entertainment district boundaries. We, at the time, looked at these boundaries just based on the acreage and investment requirements of the application. So, that's where there is a lot of in and out within the boundaries of entertainment districts for this. These are the proposed boundaries. Again, we are not expanding any, into any new properties. We are not adding into any new properties. Just to zoom in a little bit, this is Scioto East, blue area. On the left side is 2016 boundary. So, Block F, J, and E are taken out of this district and they are included in Scioto West. And then, Block G and D are included in, are out of Scioto North and are included in East. This is the purple area for Scioto West. None of the changes are made for area west of the river, just along east. These three blocks from east are included in the west. And then, Scioto North, no major changes. Blocks D and G are taken out of this district and included in east. So, those are the changes that we are proposing with these amendments. With that recommendation, Mayor Peterson recommended approval in December and staff recommendation is approval for three resolutions. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Want to take a moment, if there's anyone present this evening from the general public that would like to make comment regarding this legislation? Hearing none. I will open it up to council questions and discussion.
I have a, I have a question and it's, it was in the memo. It said that when you create or amend the district, that new investment needs to be made, approximately a $50 million new investment. How does, how does that impact these changes? So, if you make changes and you, and you add an area to a present area that may be fairly fully developed, are you able to, that's not going to happen. So, explain that.
Yeah. In the application, so that is 50 million in private and public development and there's been such significant development in Bridge Park since 2016. We've got in all the applications where that new investment's present and it qualifies.
And it qualifies. So, it doesn't have to be new, starting today and forward.
Right.
It's just new in general. Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. Thanks.
You know, this totally makes sense and it opens up a lot of opportunities at Bridge Park for the new people arriving, the new restaurants. And, you know, with the North market coming in, they're going to need this help, probably some of those particular applicants. So, it makes great sense. Thank you.
I had a question as well. Because there is significant development going, does it make sense to create another new one, a new CED, whatever, and?
Right. So, that was one of the considerations we thought about, but we met with Crawford-Hoying to look at what the new, because they raised the issue with Scioto North, that we're all aware that that one's reaching capacity. And so, we looked at the proposed development timelines in the areas and we all feel that just amending these for right now will take care of the problem. We don't anticipate, we may need to create a new district one day, but we don't feel that that's needed for, to achieve these goals.
But that option would remain, so if there's development, that could go towards a new one.
Yes.
So, if it starts to, some, some other part becomes under stress, you do have the opportunity to create another one.
Absolutely.
I have one other question. Could you put the slide up on the east, on the east district? And it goes as far as Shamrock, so it doesn't begin to even touch the area towards the shopping center, correct? The, it doesn't. So, my question then to staff about not, if we're going to make this amendment, are we at 91 acres? What's the largest you can, you can go? Is it 90 acres? Is that?
75 acres to get maximum 15 permits.
So, 75, so this will be, this new east encompasses how many acres?
It's about 91.
It's 91?
Yeah. It's 86 or, yeah.
Okay.
It's more than 75.
So, it's allowed to be more than 75?
Yes. 75 is the minimum to get the 15.
The minimum.
To get 15 total permits.
But you can have more.
And 15 permits is the maximum number of permits. But you could have more acreage.
Right. I guess what I'm thinking is, is that, is there any reason why you wouldn't want to extend it farther to the east in order to encompass new development along the, I know there's some new, like, there's a new, where the pen zones is? Is this, is pen zones encompassing any of that?
Mm-mm.
Because I know that there's some things going in there that are going to be looking for this kind of thing and I just wondered, that's where the conversation came about adding on.
So, we can, again, the goal with this one was to.
Simply shift.
Right. And we did not want to increase the boundaries. We thought that that would be a more kind of considered approach. We can alter this. Next month, we could change that boundary.
You could.
Yes.
Okay. It's not like you have to go through an entire process with the state and applications and all of that.
And it will just have to have development that justifies creation, that meets those development requirements, but we can use part of the district. If it's Scioto East CED, then we can look at all the development in Scioto East CED, not just the part that we're adding.
Right. To broaden the boundary.
If we expanded it, right.
Not to add a new one, just to broaden, but you have to prove more development as you broaden it, is what you're saying.
If we look at the entire CED and the entire new development in that CED, but if we created an entirely new one, we'd have to take, you know, that, you know, look at new development outside of those boundaries.
No, I totally understand that. I was just thinking if we're going through the process of changing the boundaries, whether it would be beneficial to widen it to the east because of the fact that we're encouraging that area to develop and this would allow, and the east is not really using many of these liquor licenses yet. So, that was my question. So, I'm just throwing it out as a thought, as thought-provoking.
I think we would suggest, I would suggest that, you know, as Jennifer mentioned, you can modify or you can add new and what would drive that decision process or the need to do that would potentially be new development or redevelopment. And I think that's, was what drove these to begin with, was around the new redevelopment of what was occurring, so. But you have that option, certainly.
Anything else?
I have just one question, Deviani. These maps kind of look like gerrymandering. Can you not move someone from a district to another district who is, has an existing permit? Is that why these were pulling off F and J? Is they're not developed yet and there isn't a permit in there? So, we can't make clean lines because we can't mess with someone who already has their permit?
Right.
Correct. And at the time, in 2015, when original maps were made, the development proposals were nowhere close to where they are today, so now we have a better idea of what's coming.
I have just a couple, thank you for those thoughts. On the, on the charts, there's just a couple typographical errors. In the first chart, Scioto North, where it says totals, the 2 is in the column of Pint House rather than where is needed. And in the Scioto East CED, underissued, the X is up under issued, not Oakland Nursery. So, if we could just, before we make it official, if we can just scrub those charts really quick and make sure that our X's and our numbers are in the right column or rows, I guess, across the way, that would be, that would be great. Very good. Any other discussion regarding that? Is there, let's see.
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion. We'll just take a vote, so I'll call them. Thank you.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Deviani. Thanks, Jennifer. Appreciate your thoughts. Staff comments?
Thank you, members of council. Just a couple items that were in your packet and for the, for the public's sake. We will be sponsoring a night of innovation, Connected Dublin Public Engagement Meeting[1742.36]
It's to educate and inform residents on current Connected Dublin projects, which has a lot to do with this language we've used called smart cities and leveraging of technology, and then also engage residents in an interactive citizen-centric session to envision what Dublin's digital future might look like. So I think it'll be a very good conversation. And again, that's Thursday, January 16th, at the Rec Center from 6:00 to 8:00. There was also a memo in your packet from, regarding the outcome of the Community Development Committee and, and looking at the South High Street situation. There's more follow-up to happen on that. No guidance needed tonight on that, but just wanted to share that with you. And that reminds me that I sent out an email towards the end of the year in collaboration with the Clerk Council's Office, that we would, are redoing our information packets, the packets relative to council meeting. Obviously, will be all those items specifically related to the upcoming agenda and any follow-ups that were probably the result of the previous council meeting. The other packets that we're going to do in the off weeks are just general information update reports that may not, that are not related to an agenda. We, after looking at this for quite a while and trying to obviously keep our communication solid with you and the general public, we thought it'd be better to have, I know more packets probably isn't better, but distributing that information out a little bit more over the month as opposed to everybody trying to cram all your reading in and separating those things out that are truly relevant to the agenda versus those things that are, are not. And there'll be an occasion when we may not get it quite right, but, but we'll get it very close to right, I think, going forward. So I just would welcome your feedback as we try that out the next couple of months. And if you don't like that, we can try something else. But we just wanted to try to smooth that amount of information coming out to you and the public, you know, a little bit easier.
When would you suggest we, if we have thoughts we might like to discuss among our peers in a, one of those items that is not on a city council meeting, when would be the appropriate time? If we saw something in there that we thought rose to the level of a collective discussion, when would be the appropriate time to bring that?
Yeah, absolutely. Think you make us aware of it as soon as possible. And, you know, we could get that on, on an agenda or, or, or put it back into a packet for a council meeting to make sure that's not getting lost or missed and certainly, you know, react that way.
Good. Thank you.
And really, there's going to be a little bit of judgment in here. If we really think it's something that might, I mean, not specifically related to an agenda, we'll play with this a little bit and, and just kind of think through, could this really have implications for the meeting and do the best we can if it's a hot topic or what have you? So we're really asking permission to kind of play with this a little bit and see if it, see if it serves you better. And obviously, if it does not serve you better than, and the public better, we'd go back to the other way of doing it, so.
Questions? Very good. Thank you.
And just, just want to say thank you to Mayor Peterson on behalf of staff and Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms at the time for your great service, as well as all of council in, in those roles. Really appreciate working with you in that capacity. Congratulations to Mayor Amoros Grooms and Vice Mayor DeRosa. Look forward to working with you as well in those leadership roles. And congratulations again to all those re-elected and to our new council member. Got to spend some time with Council Member Keeler, getting him ramped on and, and of course, told his wife, she probably, and son, tonight, she probably wouldn't see them, him anymore, but no, we, no, I'm just kidding. We just plan to keep him, keep you all really busy. So we're looking forward to an exciting 2020. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So council committee reports, first we'll do, we want to do existing committees first, if anyone has a report to give back. I don't know that there's been a lot of activity over the holiday. Does anyone have a committee that has a report? No. Okay. Then we will just, I will read to you what we collectively decided on of the committees, their chairs, their members, and so on and so forth. So for the administrative committee, Kathy will be the chair, and the members of that committee with her will be Jane and Christina.
Oh, thanks.
For the Community Development Committee, the chair of that committee will be John, and he will be joined by Andy and myself. For the Finance Committee, the chair will be Christina, and she will be joined by Greg and Andy. For the Public Services Committee, the chair will be Jane, and she will be joined by Kathy and John. For our Planning and Zoning Commission representative will be Jane. For our Coda representative will be Kathy. For our Arts Council representative will remain John. For our Board of Education Council Liaison will be Greg. For our Dublin Bridges Liaison will be Jane. For the Friendship City Association will be Christina. For the Mid-Ohio, the Morpsey Representation?
Andy's going to join me on the Friendship Association.
Okay. I apologize. Friendship Committee will be Christina and Andy.
Friendship is you, as well.
I'll continue, Jen.
Is Christina and Andy.
Okay.
Morpsey, I will remain there. Is that representative? For the Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission representative will be Andy. For the US 33 corridor representative will be Kathy and Jane. John will continue as the Veterans Committee Representative. Jane will assume the role. She, you get, you get a new, new draftee here, as Jane's going to be our Washington Township liaison moving forward. And Christina will remain the Complete Count Committee Representative. So that is the motion that I make. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Very good.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Okay. We already talked about, is there any other council comments before we reach roundtable? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to roundtable. We'll start to my left on the end there, Andy, if there are any items you would like to, you know what, that's not fair to do for your first meeting, is it? Sorry. We'll start over here with
Congratulations to my re-elected members and friends. It's a, it is a very difficult thing to put your name on a ballot and to go out and get votes and get supported and to serve in this capacity. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for each and every one of you that do that. And congratulations to you, and congratulations to Kathy and Chris in your leadership roles. The city is in good hands, and Happy New Year to everyone.
I will echo that and thank the community for supporting me in this year's elections. Congratulations to both of you for your leadership roles. I think it's going to be fantastic, and I think we've got some great committee assignments and just really looking forward to all the work. So thanks to everybody.
Ditto to everything being said, and I want to welcome you, Andy, and thank you for your past participation and the lovely job you did fixing that farmhouse up on a key intersection of our city. That was a tough one, so welcome and glad to have you aboard, and congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor, and congratulations to you for being re-elected.
Thank you. Mr. Keeler?
I guess I'd first like to thank all of you for being so welcoming. I feel like you're all friends. That wasn't what I necessarily expected, being that, you know, we all have personalities and I wasn't sure how it was going to work out, but I feel like I could turn to any one of you, as well as you, Dana. I'm extremely impressed with our staff. I think we're in very good hands, and I'm really excited for the next four years. So again, thank you for being so warm and welcoming and holding my hand a little bit.
I just want to welcome Andy, too. I've watched him on Architectural Review Board. I've seen the work he's done. I've seen the way he campaigned. I've seen the way he's related to people, and I'm just, I'm thrilled to have him. And I, I think that he speaks very well of this council. We are a very positive force as we work together, and I couldn't be more proud to, to be with a group like this. And then I just want to point a finger to past mayor Greg Peterson. I've never seen such an exemplary mayor. We've learned a lot by watching you. You just have a knack for this. Chrissy's got some pretty tall shoes to fill here, but it's been a pleasure working under, under your leadership and watching you build the relationships that you have. I think the city is built on relationships, and, and this council's very good at that, but you are, you are an example of that. So Happy New Year all, and congratulations to the ones re-elected. I'm looking forward to it, too, so.
Yeah. Welcome, Andy. We're excited, really, you're going to hold our hand here in about a month and a half instead of the other way around, so very excited. It is such an honor to serve this community, and everybody up here knows that. And so we thank the, the community and the staff for that opportunity to do that. Congratulations, Chris. Congratulations to everybody who's re-elected. I look forward to serving with all of you, and Dublin has a really exciting decade ahead, and it's really going to be terrific to work with all of you to make that really something special, so, thanks.
I'd like to congratulate my fellow candidates that were successful. I, you know, a lot of people you talk to during the campaign, and I would say, you know, I really love the job of being on city council and I really loathe the process of getting it. And I know if I asked you the same question, your answer would be the same. And it is a, it is a very, as Greg said, it is very difficult, very, I don't know that it's ever been a more, I've never done anything more personal than putting my name on a ballot and driving around town and seeing your, your signs and yards and your competitor's signs, and it never leaves you and, for those months. And so congratulations to you and thank you for being willing to serve. You know, when I was first elected to council, I was at an event, and Greg was speaking, and my mom happened to be standing next to me.